I'd like to call this regular meeting of council to order October the 18th, 2021 at 7:00 P. M. I'd like to recognize that we are on three side land and that we're all pretty people. Thank you. Next, I'd like our approval of the agenda. As you see the notice from Council of Landmark, a written notice to recent resolution number two zero two one, one three six and two zero two one, one three seven. I am submitting a written notice motion for recent resolution as per section one thirty nine, one A B of the municipal act. Thank you. This will go on to the next council agenda. Now, may I have a proof of duty? Council of Landmark, Council of Macmurdo, all in favor? Next, we'll go to community comments and feedback. Do we have anything today? I'd also like to say I have regrets from our C E O Anthony McGinnis and also from Andre Pro. Community comments, feedback.
I'm wondering if I'm going to get any answers to my questions that I asked at the last meeting.
I will have to. Anthony is not here today. Tammy, do you know if we have any answers?
No, we do not have any answers.
I apologize. Anthony's not here. We will have him for you for next answer. Anybody else comment, any comments or feedback? Certain final time. Anybody have any comments or feedback? Thank you. Seeing none. We will start with the adoption of minutes. Regular meeting with council October fourth, twenty twenty one. Resolution number two zero two one, one three nine moved by Council of Landmark, seconded by Council of Macmurdo. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Constance, Manitoba on Monday, October the fourth, twenty twenty one, we adopted a circular. Any administration requirements? Any council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Here. Next, we'll go to six point one, audited financial report.
Yes, so this year's audit was completed by Kendall and Tammy, who have a special account. And we received an unqualified report. And so just to give you a couple of the highlights of the audit of this year, so basically reporting of the twenty twenty financial reporting. As we're seeing the financial position, our cash is slightly higher than in twenty nineteen. And it was some COVID funding that we received in twenty twenty, late in the year, as well as the surplus of two nine twelve thousand. The receivable increased due to the outstanding taxes by about two million dollars in twenty. This was due to the tax bill being delayed due to COVID as required by the province, as well as the large property that's in receivership. And that is disclosed in the top of the notes, in our statement. A different revenue, waste water treatment has reached substantial completion in twenty twenty. Therefore, the twenty four million dollars was reported as revenue from the different revenue. Our long term debt and principal was reduced by one point one million in twenty twenty. Under T C A, so our capital assets decreased by one million in twenty twenty, and the main products that we have are the Thompson guy of removal. Compacted the landfill, we had two residential rubbish trucks, the assembly, a cool study and the steghorn watering middle. On the statement of operations, which is our revenues expenses. And under revenues, the taxes, the grantee was reduced in twenty, twenty as in twenty nineteen, we received six hundred thousand dollars additional amount from belly. And user fees reduced in twenty nineteen from twenty nineteen due to the COVID closures that we had to, that were mandated. At permit, and our stock price higher than twenty nineteen. Our penalties for twenty twenty were much higher budget. Four hundred and sixteen thousand was put by council to reserve. And then of course, about three hundred thousand was recorded as an expense under allowance without full accounts due to the property ownership. Water and sewer, the revenues were high in twenty twenty because of, as I mentioned earlier, the waste water treatment plant revenues were all put into, were all before these revenues this year from deferred revenue. The brands, problems in Manitoba, increasing the COVID grant that we received late in twenty twenty for both general and for transit. The brand others, the gas tax was doubled in twenty nineteen and it wasn't twenty twenty, so it was the last in twenty twenty under revenues. And under expense, the protective services was higher in twenty twenty due to the, through the R C P unionization cost. And as well as the court commissioner costs were much higher in twenty twenty. And transportation, it was a small reduction in expenses due to transit being reduction during the COVID shutdowns, as well as especially offered by increasing burdening of costs, so in the still renewable cost. And environmental health has a small reduction due to those produce recycling expenses during the COVID closures. We just want for conservation, how reduction due to the closure of hotel association in twenty twenty. And recreation decreased due to COVID closures, as well as we deployed the staff. And the pool of schools in twenty nineteen, I just had for maintenance in twenty twenty. Some notes to highlight, I note two, there was a qualification again of the Z audit. And it wasn't completely at the point, and so it was consolidated as it was not material to the city's audit. And note twelve, states of contingency, there's a large recovery that comes with the ownership, so it was a new level of that. And the fifteen subsequent events includes the ISF funding, so for both roads and water and wastewater. Note twenty two was the trust fund, so it's kind of was the trust fund, the major. This most significant one this year was the water facility, they, that money is what sixty eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty. Then those six has a reserve information, so just, so the reserves increased by one point nine million in twenty twenty. And the main reason for the COVID funding, eighteen to general, one forty two thousand to transit. Along with interest allocation of four hundred sixteen thousand until the surplus of twenty seventy. And then schedule fourteen, which has the detailed breakdown of the surpluses. So twenty twenty surplus was two hundred and twelve thousand, mainly due to some additional revenues being realized, with the expenses being reduced due to COVID. I'm copying of these audit will be under rest aid as well as including the gender package today.
Thank you. Just like the CFO to ballpark a number for us, I know it's in here. What is the, including your R C P costs, what is the total rough percentage of our income that the tons just pays for labor?
Sorry, for labor? And I think it's what forty nine percent of our spending budget is labor cost.
Inclusive of theirs? So including them would be at roughly?
Anything else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question to the CFO. When I look at the revenue section, the water and sewer, if I'm not wrong, you have thirty million dollars, which is included to twenty four from the two level of government funding. So that means we still have about six point one million dollars revenue based on the connection, right? So compared to last year, compared to two thousand and nineteen, it needs to kind of top down about two million dollars, right? Compared to last two thousand and nineteen, the revenue is down about two million dollars. Am I right?
It's down about three hundred thousand in the, in the water. A schedule nine has the, the breakdown of the water revenue, so it's, it's down about three hundred thousand dollars based on water consumption. And then there was also additional, we had allocated gas tax to fund the capital projects in twenty nineteen, so.
Okay, all right.
Three hundred thousand dollars just in the consumption portion of it.
So it's not significant then?
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, saying no more. But if we report it's available. We'll move on to seven resolutions. Seven point one is a resolution to approve the Water Services Board to provide project management services. Resolution two zero two one, one four zero, moved by Council of Macmurdo, seconded by Council of Landmark. Fear resolved that council approved entering into a project management service agreement with manageable water services board for the water and waste may remove. Okay.
I'm sure it gives me information from the memo that was attached. As the city of Thompson had engaged the services and management of water services for any more situation, including past waters to renew a project as well as a new wastewater treatment plant. And the management of water services board has professional staff, administrators, engineers, project managers and finance personnel to oversee projects to development. From development to delivering just multi million dollar multi year products cost common. The city of Thompson is reselling of investing in Canada project for the water waste water renewal project valued at forty nine dollars. And this is a large project for the city of Thompson, and we would benefit from oversight of the project management specialists to ensure that the city receives professional oversight and value for money to live in your project. And in order to do so, councils required to pass a resolution indicating the desire to engage their services. Once the resolution is passed, the management of water services board will forward agreements to the city for review. Allow us to post the work with these structures, the agreements will require further resolutions of council to proceed with them.
Any questions, council?
I'll try and just edit our internal skills and with this type of project. But these people, this is what they do for a living. The Water Services Board regarding I S F, as per hence needs metal, I just wanted to say that it's important to envision the natural water, natural water service board for their professional staff, administration, engineer, project management and finance personnel. They have the experience with this type of project, including the legislations, the acts, the ability of applicable regulations. And all three licenses and permits they, they move and we have intimate knowledge of this. Things that we have to be with all. We need our staff and their familiarity with our, our water and wastewater system to work, and in our infrastructure, to work with the Water Services Board to ensure most efficient and effective project delivery here. Their familiarity, fully, their familiarity, sorry, for all players such as contractor, city staff, engineering, design suppliers, provincial acts, water and wastewater works, and the agreements that must be adhered to to receive the funding through I S F. Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program of forty eight million, seventy thousand dollar. One make sure, I hope that we all be, to make sure that this project is run right. I'll definitely support this, needed help and look forward to the results. So much of this needed improvement to our infrastructure. The, the long term benefits of this in maintenance and breakdowns that happen, or great water breaks and things that would happen on a regular basis that we, our public work has to deal with all the time. Be greatly reduced after this, and I just want to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck. We're already getting five dollars for the dollar just going in. I just want to make sure we extend it, make sure we get done right and if we replace some of the infrastructure that's poorly deteriorating, it's something we can't see. But I know that those questions open my public works as anyone told you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And again, I am remiss tonight, or we have a new director of planning and technical services, Lyle Soprano, who's joined our team. And he will definitely be a part of the move going ahead, looking after this project. So thank you, Lyle. And of course, we know Neil McLean, he is our public works superintendent. On, we go next. Council of Holber, I believe you were next.
No, I never remember.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's certainly a big project for us to be involved in, probably. I'm not sure before my time, but I would suggest probably one of the biggest projects ever funded by the federal provincial government, and certainly we have to give our share. Reading through the city manager's notes, there's no doubt we've had those services before in Thompson on a number of occasions. I've, I've conferred with council of Landmarkers that we, we need that level of expertise with this project, I believe that. I don't think the city has that. At that top is a lot of money to deal with. The one thing that I find a little disconcerting and that is that we would look at it later and review it is the amount of money that we're going to have to pay to engage the services. It doesn't say that. It gives you an example of a project of three million dollars before, but it doesn't talk about how much it's going to cost us. And I guess my question is, when, when it states that these fees will be outlined in future agreements or council review and consideration, is that in a formal resolution or once we sign the agreement, it's signed? What does that mean? I'd like to know that before I vote on this resolution.
Thanks, Matt. Jenny, I still do.
Yes, my understanding that another resolution will be required to proceed with the gradings. Okay. Any other questions? For Deputy Mayor, I don't think.
I think Council of Landmark. Okay, so I was just going to comment on that. Yeah, so this is just the preliminary to get into reviewing an agreement to work with them. This is just the very preliminary first steps. So, and I, I supporting this, this is a legacy project for the next chapter of the city, and I think goes hand in hand that now we have a director of development services to help oversee these type of projects. And this is all going to start very quickly. So as a preliminary, I mean, we will as councils have another resolution at time when we can ask questions on the agreement that we will actually entertain with them and the dollar amounts and all the technical part would still be the next step to this. So this is just to get this ball moving. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council of Landmark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not necessarily disagree with this contract to this water sewer board. But I must point out, the wastewater treatment plant is under the oversight. And two component of that project, to me, there's a hiccup. Number one is the conveyor, the slash at the end of the process. And now we have to spend some money to buy three, what you call the the dumpster trailer to take care of the slush. That's what I got. I think that under the oversight by that part is still in our opinion. Second of all, component is the chemical ratio. Okay, so we have to end up hiring a private contractor with a wagon truck to suck up some of the slush, which is untreated and take it to the, the good and dumb. To me, oversight, this, all this, let the thing, I don't know who responsible for that. I don't know, I'm not expert on that. But when we hire a project manager, those are the thing I believe they should be aware of, the whole design and the outcome and the result. So those two hiccup to, to me is problematic with a project of thirty six million dollars. It's not far from the forty eight million dollars. Again, I think they are a good organization. I'm not trying to throw down under the bus, but I just want to be caution. Moving forward for this project, we should be aware of, especially we have a new director. I believe you will be one that look after this project later on with the thing or part of it. So just to give you a heads up for that hiccup that we had before. So moving forward, I don't want to see that happen again, but at least we are aware of, we learn from that. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council? Council of Landmark?
Yeah, just in brief, I think everybody's done a good job summarizing this. I'll, I'll be supporting it as just kind of the next step to the, the efficient expenditure of this, this massive funding that we're receiving and contributing to. So I'll be supporting and I'd like to welcome while in his capacity as the Director of Technical Services and Development. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council? I'll definitely be supporting this, the Water Services Board. They have access to the contractors, they have ways to get around. If you've been in Winnipeg lately, the construction down there is absolutely phenomenal. So we'll definitely need help in making sure that we get contractors that are willing to come north, and I believe the Water Services Board will definitely be a good partner in doing so. So saying no more questions or call for the question. All those in favor? Heard. Two is a resolution to approve the Manitoba Hydro easement agreement projects two zero two one, zero nine nine six. Resolution two zero two one, one four one, moved by Council of Ellsworth, seconded by Council of Macmurdo. Whereas Manitoba Hydro has submitted an application for the easement agreement file number S U B one five three six eight dash zero three. Now therefore, be it resolved, council approve the grant abeesment for the required Manitoba hydro easement agreement file number S U B one five three six eight dash zero three for the administrations.
I believe that this is for airport distribution addition. Additional powers to the airport and some of it just has to run through citywide.
Okay. Any questions of council, in turn? Council of Landmark?
I just wanted to ask administration or director of development to take a look and make sure that it's overload, overlap that on the top of our upcoming water and sewer projects and road projects. Just so that we're cognizant of the fact that if they're putting in new lines, we're going to have backhoes, excavators, loaders, everything working around some of this stuff. Just take a look at it. I don't know if it has a reason to. We want, we'll hang wires.
Are we all comfortable with this going ahead? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor? Heard. Seven point three is a resolution to approve the calculation of prices for the purchase of three three quarter ton trucks. Resolution two zero two one, one four two, moved by Council of Wong, seconded by Council of Ellsworth. Fear resolved that council approved the recommendation of purchasing agent and award the purchase of two three quarter ton crew cab trucks to Thompson Ford for their tender price of a hundred nine thousand nine hundred two dollars plus applicable taxes. And award the purchase of one three quarter ton regular cab truck to Twin Motors for their tender price of forty nine thousand six hundred and forty three dollars with additional taxes as per tender file number one three five two one. I'm with the administration, you know?
I, so during the twenty twenty one budget discussions, administration, administration had committed to conducting a fleet review of all light duty vehicles for all the departments throughout the city. The review would determine the dispersment of the fleet as well as identify any shortfalls or redundancy. So council had approved a budget amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the financial plan to replace any vehicles that were identified throughout this review. So with the completion of this review, seven vehicles have been identified as redundant and were removed from service, constituting a nineteen percent reduction in our total fleet. After this reduction, the city will now have thirty vehicles remaining with a hundred and forty staff. So through this review was determined that there were three vehicles in need of replacements in twenty twenty one as part of the remaining fleet. Group cab, three quarter ton trucks, and one regular cab three quarter ton truck. Two of these vehicles have been taken off the road due to safety issues and cannot be safety further. Third unit has too many repair issues and constitutes no value for money to repair at this point. So the city has released an R F P for the purchases of two three crew cab three quarter ton trucks and one three regular cab three quarter ton truck. Thompson Ford was a successful bidder for the two three quarter ton trucks or crew caps. And Twin Motors was a successful bidder for the regular cab three quarter ton truck. Thompson Ford with a delivery of, of one week, as long as the order was placed while they were still in stock. And Twin Motors with a delivery of forty weeks. So administration recommends that council award the purchase of two three quarter ton crew cab trucks to Thompson Ford for a cost of a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and two dollars plus applicable taxes. And the purchase of one three quarter ton regular cab truck to Twin Motors Thompson for the cost of forty nine thousand six hundred and thirty three dollars plus applicable taxes. The total financial implication for this purchase, for these purchases would be one hundred and fifty nine thousand five hundred and forty five dollars plus taxes.
Thank you. Hold you. Council of Wong is mover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you, the public group director that provides the list and the, the fleet, so we can have more picture and understanding. Okay, now I do have a few questions to you. When you say we are buying three three quarter ton. When I look at the approval note, it said Thompson Ford F one fifty X L T, so it's a half ton truck. So with that, I think something is not right there. Because once we approve this tonight, it's a binding document, legal binding document. They can come in and say, look, you guys agree with F one fifty is not a three quarter ton, it's a half ton. Could be a typo, but when we approve the paper, the face of what in front of us? Second concern I have, I said it before, I said it again, which is I've been called for sexist as well when I say that. Is that all to real drive?
First, that is a typo, absolutely. It is a, it's a half two fifty, not a half one fifty. They are not all.
They're not four wheel drive.
There are two of them are four wheel drive.
Then some, some piece.
Two of them are four wheel driver, four by fours.
There's only one student we drive, the other two is four wheel drive. Is there any reason why we still stick to new drive nowadays?
We don't. Currently now with our new R F P that we put out for these, we did not expect either way. We look for whatever the best deal was that could come to the city of Thompson that kind of fit within what we needed. So we don't even expect it to be a drive track. It came back to the point is two of them were already four.
I have a couple more questions. When you did provide us the list, are those three truck replaced? Is that after the seven truck taking out or, so you say after we, you take ninety percent of the feet out of the stock? So we remain thirty of the vehicles. So is that thirty included this three new? Yes. And also another one, last question, sorry, the utility. The day when I asked at the public work, I asked you about the, the manhole concern I had. You told me we only have two staff working off. So when I look at your, your list, you have four vehicle for two staff. Does that mean that you have two sitting there not used?
We have three vacancies in the water and sewer labor department right now. We also have one vacancy in our wastewater treatment plant, so we have two staff there currently with one vacancy. Plus we have two wastewater or water treatment plants or operators. So there is two water, three now waters who are laborers. But there is other water and sewer utility employees that operate trucks as well.
I, I, I think.
Council of Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I currently, Council of Wong, certainly thank you for, for reviewing, as we stated in the budget review, you took seven out of the fleet. We were left with thirty. I'm still, I'm still a little uncomfortable. I'd like to not tonight, but the next time we went to budget, I'd like to have that issue back under to have a more of an explanation exactly what we need thirty trucks or one hundred and forty people. It still seems to be a lot, but I'm sure there's a good explanation. You did break it down. And I appreciate that. The other problem I got with this is not, is not even the money. We, we, we did put the money forward and you need to replace equipment when it gets to the point that it's unsafe, deteriorating, absolutely. But I don't know, I've been living in Thompson for forty one years. There's other people that have been there along with me. But I don't know, I've been living in Thompson for forty-one years. There's other people that have been there along with me, why we would ever. Buy a truck that's only a two-wheel, four-wheels. Even when I bought my wife a car, I had to make sure it was all wheel because of the conditions in Thompson. That's that my, my concern. And to say that it might be cheaper, I would, I would disagree with you because. If we gotta get a toll every other day because it's stuck in the snow, well, sooner or later, that, that, that bill rises. It's no longer cheaper. And I would wish going forward. That we would be looking at all vehicles that's four-wheel drive, not two-wheel drive. I, I don't know if someone gets around. When you got, sometimes you got a lot of snow in our streets, uh, you know, there'd be snowstorms and whatnot and, and you're asking for trouble. So. Know that about it again. I, I thank public works for doing that review, but I think there's more work needs to be done. And certainly I would hope that you would keep in mind when we bring forth resolutions in the future. That it's not always about costs. I know sometimes that's what we think, that sometimes the damage you get, but it's also about the safety of people. And someone gets out to strain themselves in the winter time. Trying to push out the two-wheel vehicle and has a heart attack. I wonder what type of tosser is gonna be current then. So that's my big issue, but it's not about the purchase. I want to be clear with that. Fact that I still think they should be four-wheel, not two-wheel. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Quick question, um, the three new units that have been purchased, do they have GPS units being inclusive in the cost? Or is that an aftermarket cost?
It's not aftermarket cost, the, the units that, uh, the GPS that we are receiving now. Those units that we're gonna go into those tracks will just now be created. So there's no, no cost.
Of the, and like others have mentioned, we appreciate obviously the assessment. Just if you wouldn't mind quickly tell us what percentage of the vehicles we have now have the units.
They are in week three of the install, uh, so. I think we're probably about sixty percent completed for their installs right now. So.
But to be a hundred this year is.
I, you know, I, I very much hope so.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor McMurdo.
Thanks, Mayor Scoop. Uh, as everyone said, thanks for the review and the good information that's presented there. Uh, I'd like to agree with both, uh, Councilor Wong and Ellsworth that I think in Thompson, we should be purchasing four-wheel drive trucks. That's been in the similar situation that you described at work myself where I'm stuck and trying to do a job with somebody else and I have multiple. You know, man hours to get a vehicle going and get a job done. So I would agree with that. And, uh, my one question was, we approved the purchase of a truck back in August sixteenth for water and sewer. So how does that impact the, uh, the overall hundred and eighty thousand that we did approve to spend if this takes us to a hundred and sixty or close to a hundred and sixty thousand?
It doesn't impact it at all. That's something I had in mind, that budget that, uh, utility logo for water and sewer was in the budget since twenty seventeen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a last comment about the condition. When you wrote up the, uh. Okay, the approval note, we said the, the unit one zero two, one zero five, one thirty-eight is a poor condition. I hate to do the comparison, but can you assure us under your watch in the future? Because the fire department, when you look at all the vehicle they have. To me, except, except they come back from the firefighting. And they drive around, it's all nice and clean conditions. Can we have the same standard applied to other feet that we own, the city own? Because it shouldn't be poor condition if you take care of that, right? So can we do something about it? Because I don't want to see that ten years later. Or twelve years later because of the age or because of the condition, we have to buy, nothing wrong with the engine. Right? So hopefully I can see your commitment or get your commitment, like under your watch for that purpose. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good comments tonight, uh, just a couple of things on my end. When we talk about our asset management, you've been talking about an asset management program for the last couple of years and I think it's, it's great now having, uh. Lyle Sopronics is the Director of, of Development Technical Services as asset management will fall under that. So. When we start to getting, this would be the beginning of an asset management program. Um, when we start the replacement, we have these years. So if you look at the years of some of these other ones. We're now at that time where we have to start replacing and rotating. So I think this fits good starting this, um, with the comics tonight, uh, for the, for the next round. That this is a good start for the asset management when we start inputting all that data that we definitely have to get into place. So. Um, I think this was good and this is a good start and other things for you to start working on while with this now. And I think, uh, that this is, uh, good for me. I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, certainly a lot of good comments, but I did not look at here in the mileage of the truck. I talked to, to, uh. I read from the plane personally, but those trucks, I believe on Friday. I seen pictures or seen a truck. And what I think was even older, was really deteriorated. Rusted out. Then I do it mileage in year. A lot of good vehicles that last for longer than that. I think it comes back to Councilor Wong's point. Is keeping those trucks clean. We don't know the environment that they work in. I know in my days at Valet in the former ankle. Especially around the copper and all of that. So if you had to wash trucks, they'll wash they, wash them up clean or else they deteriorate in a year if you rust it out. So I concur with Council Wong. If we haven't got a wash day, that is something you need to look at. I'm not sure if we do have one or not. But when trucks or equipment is returned, especially when they're in areas that is going to cause that deterioration, going to cause that. We should be looking at make sure they're clean. And when we come back and review the report, you could in fact have a two thousand and two. That's got high mileage, um, but in excellent condition. It's well maintained. But you would have a two thousand and ten that's rusted out and unsafe. So that's what you gotta look at. I, I'm sure you understand what I'm talking about, the, the rest of the place. So I certainly concur that we should have a program in place, no different than the. Uh, firewall does to make sure our equipment is kept up, but looked after. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor McLean, they don't, or Councilor. Neil, would you like to make comment?
I have nothing for you. I mean, we do have a wash day. We are trying to start a better maintenance program, washing program for all our, all of our fleet. Uh, now we kind of falls under public works, so we're trying to. Make, improve things a lot more for us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Here. We are now already at the mayor's. These are the activities from October fifth to the eighteenth. City Manager Anthony McGinnis, uh, and I attended the street reach announcement. And toured the sobering center with Minister Friesen as well. Mayor, uh, Council had the opportunity to meet with Minister Friesen on October the fifth. Mayor Council, Mountwood Municipal Service Official. On October the sixth. Attended the community's futures north central development networking dinner along with, uh, Councilor Ellsworth on October the seventh. I participated in the Prairie's Economic Development Canada Roundtable on October the eighth. The mayor and council as well as administration attended the city school liaison meeting on October the thirteenth. Along with Councilor Lumber, uh, me and I attended the Thompson Community Foundation photo op for mayor and council. On October the fourteenth. Community Futures North Central Development Annual General Meeting. Yeah, I was able to go in and out. Deputy Mayor gave greetings for me. Again, Councilor Ellsworth is on that board, so he was in attendance. We had, uh, mayor, uh, mayor and council, we attended the dedication ceremony at City Center Mall. For Mitchell Waisa, three, three five land and the ribbon cutting ceremony for twenty-six feathers store on October the fifteenth. And, uh, thank you to Strath Allen for, uh, being a big part of, uh, proof and reconciliation after our city has just come a long way. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, I met Premier Burton and city. City and some, and council were, went on the public works tour. I did not go on that of the wastewater treatment plant. The Thompson Community Development Corporation Board had amended introductory reading with the consultant of October the fourteen. And that is my meeting for today. Uh, anybody else?
You already commented on a game readings on behalf of the city at the Community Futures AGM. And that Public Works Committee and Council were able to tour the wastewater treatment plant on Friday afternoon. So thanks to. Neil McLean and Clarence who, uh, gave us the tour for that. Saturday, October sixteenth, first thing in the morning, the Winter Wonderland has been started. Up again and we're decorating and we'll be there again this Saturday. So if anybody would like to volunteer for it, if the funds are going to the. New aquatic facility or if any organizations want to have sites, they can, uh, contact city hall or contact myself and. We can get, uh, get you involved. And, uh, thanks to Dennis Foley to the Halloween parade around town was a huge success and very much needed. There was. Many, many young kids that really got fond to participate in something and just, uh, the safety for October thirty-first for Halloween for our residents to. Keep everybody safe that night. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Uh, Councilor Ellsworth?
Yes, I, I want to acknowledge Dennis and his crew for the free on Saturday. Unfortunately, I had to watch it on Facebook from home. My wife and I. Uh, wasn't feeling so good on the weekend, feeling a lot better tonight or I wouldn't be here. It, it probably happened because of Santa's rain on Thursday night and got soaking wet. But Dennis, I publicly apologize that I should have got back to you and I did today in an email. Well, we have citizens of Thompson that sits out of the box and does things to bring people together. You need to acknowledge that. And we as a council. Need to get beyond those things and support it as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, yes, uh, I do have on the bottom here, uh. Finally, that Halloween is coming. Let's make sure all the children are safe. I'm sure our constant part emergency services. When they're available, will be out on the streets as they have been over the last few years. Uh, let's remember to leave our street lights on. Let's, uh, be careful. The weather is getting colder, it's darker here. Uh, let's, uh, beware of the slippery roads that are coming soon. I can't believe we're the eighteenth of October and we haven't had any. Real snow yet. So it's definitely coming. So with that being said, uh, thank you. Thank you to, uh, everybody for, uh, the dialogue. Tonight and welcome to Lyle one more time and, uh, have a great week, everybody, two weeks. My call for German. Deputy Mayor Valentino, Councilor Damar, all in favor?